To order the committee for June 9th. Are you ready, Kathy? All is good?
Okay. Cool.
So I think everybody on the committee is here except I'm not going to be here with some of our friends. So. Given that there are several people here, maybe we should just introduce ourselves. I'm thinking, starting with Jerry.
I'm Jerry Patanah.
Jerry, yeah.
Jake Groh.
Mike Slaughter.
Yeah.
Brian Mayer.
Richard Saw.
Judith Gantflam.
Jack Pedder.
Dorothy Kukue.
Mike Richly.
Jacob Graff.
Terry Holley.
Megan Winston.
Okay. Welcome to all the folks coming who have come tonight. So we're, I laid out an agenda for the meeting tonight. On Monday night, or Monday afternoon, rather, a portion of the committee interviewed maintenance plan advisors as we had agreed that we would be, would be a part of developing a permanent improvement plan for our schools. After that, Jay made a PowerPoint regarding his points, his point of view, which is not to hire an MPA. And so I wanted to give him an opportunity to say that, to just share his thoughts before we talk about the interview process and the committee's thoughts on the businesses that he presented to us.
So that, it was just, I think we should consider whether or not it's a worthy investment to hire an MPA. I was not under the impression that it'd be worthy from the beginning, but you know, we looked at it and you know, we saw the information that they would be able to provide. And I guess I want us to consider the fiscal responsibility of investing in that process. So the MPAs, I mean, I'll just start, this is our mission. So our school mission is a great, challenging educational environment where each student contributes to the intellectual and cultural richness of the community and has provided the skills and knowledge to become a socially responsible, self-directed, lifelong worker. And I just think that's a frame of mind we need to look at when we're making all of our So a lot of the information that we'd be looking to get from an MPA, you know, estimated cost, vendors provide this kind of information all, all the time. I mean, they, there's people, there's all kinds of people that want to sell you a project. There was a Energy Optimizers is a company that looks at House Bill 264 possibilities. That's energy savings projects. And they will do a free assessment on your facilities and give you a proposal. So I used that whole proposal to, to come up with my cost estimates. Their was a little bit lower, but it's been two years and it's been COVID, so I'd say my, my estimates are still very conservative. Some of them are exactly what they said two years ago. We were not eligible for House Bill 264 at that time. The project was over $7 million. With financing, it was $8.9 million. It just wasn't something that was feasible at the time that it was received. And that's one of the reasons it wasn't considered. We didn't have $7 million and we didn't have a way of borrowing $8.9 million. These are some of the things that we've been looking at. And you know, what an MPA is going to do is look at some of your high priorities and the idea, you know, could we do this over time? I have a project and I sort of prioritize some of the things that we've discussed. This is not set in stone. This is not, this is just, just me throwing things, you know, out that I think are relative, but this could all change. I think you need an electrical upgrade, you know, first. I mean, our high school, we would, I would say we probably need double the outlets that we have. That, that's an electrical upgrade. Before you do an HVAC project, probably be a good idea to address the electrical added to it. So that, that's why I put that first. This HVAC is an estimate from them. That's the one that I play the most because I know it's going up the most. They had our gymnasium putting AC in our gymnasium. That's 115,000. A vendor that I work with, I said, give me a ballpark figure on putting AC in the gymnasium. He told me 300 was low and 500 was pretty realistic. This roof, this is based on their numbers. Doors and windows, these are doors and windows that would help with our energy efficiency. So it's not all the doors to the classroom, it's our outside doors. And you know, the windows that open. Bathrooms, that is the cost, their cost to put new fixtures and refurbish the bath, just the bathrooms that we have. Lighting, that's, that's their specialty. That's, that's their biggest thing. This is what it would cost to get us some more modern lighting. Key card door systems for both buildings on all the outside doors, 114,000. Parking lots, addressing all of our parking lots, 750,000. And then the track resurface is a number that I got from, we were, we met with the people that did our track project. And they were saying, okay, you want to resurface your track, you know, you restripe it every three or four years and you look at a resurface at around seven years so that you can get 20 years out of your track. You resurface it at seven, you resurface it again at another seven years, and then around 20 years, we're looking at a replacement. And I said, okay, well, about how much does it cost to, to resurface? And he told me 60 to 100,000. The numbers are up and down right now on asphalt, big time. So he said 60 is the low, 100, so I just went right in the middle. And when I look at stuff, I'm always thinking of, okay, if we're going to do this, what would it, what would it cost taxpayers? But how do I, so I'm converting cost to mils. I don't know, did everybody look at the financial presentation from April? Probably not. But I have just a snapshot of that presentation. Right now, one mil in Yellow Springs brings in 170,000 dollars. I mean, it's in change, there's some change in there, but I just use 170, I like round numbers. So that, that is how I came up with the mils for that. I took whatever that number was, divided it by 170. That's why 250 is 1.46 mils, et cetera. And this is just an idea of what upgrading our systems would be like over time. So I'm looking at 10 year timeframe, if we did all nine of these projects, you're looking at 4.4 mils at minimum to get these projects done. And then on another rounder, so later you'll see I use 4.5 because I'm realistic and I realize 4.4 in today's dollars is probably 4.5 in the future. But doing just those projects over 10 years doesn't address a lot of the stuff that this committee has addressed as issues. So here's a list of the things that would go unaddressed if we put the seven and a half million, if we went with a plan to increase our permanent improvement and try to make those improvements over time. Of course, that, that plan doesn't look at secure vestibles or improving our storm shelter Handicap accessibility, that is, I think that's something that, you know, I greatly need to improve. We have water and moisture issues in the shoebox. We have water and moisture issues in a lot of places. We need more functioning bathrooms. Floor plan issues, that doesn't include getting new desks and furnishings for students and staff. Our cafeteria space and kitchens, we're not addressing those at all. We don't even really have a cafeteria here at the elementary. It doesn't replace the modular spaces, it doesn't do anything with the modular outback or the modulators at the high school. There's no added storage, there's no small group space in this. Energy efficiency, and the MPAs all, well, one of them pointed out, you know, brick and block buildings, just, they just did an insulin because that wasn't a thought back then, but it's really hard to add it later. Adequate office space, right now the board office is very cramped. It doesn't get ahead of the pace, we're just catching up. You know, there are long-term savings with this, with a single campus. We're not getting smarter classrooms at that price. Our gym floor, we can't currently host tournament games. We have no theater. We do not have a preschool program. And then all of that doesn't address any of the envelope of the building, which is in okay shape, but it, you know, it, it could use a facelift, lift, but there's, in that budget, there's, there's nothing for a facelift. So if we add any of this stuff to a plan to improve over 10 years, you're talking about increasing this amount. So if this number goes up and the number of mils in total goes up. So when I look at that, I'm looking, like I said, at 4.5 mils and I'm, I'm looking back on, on what failed in the past. So 0.5% income tax and 6.5 mils for 37 years, that's what failed. If you don't go up with an OXC project, you're leaving money on the table from the state, You know, if, if we're trying to be economical, is, is this the most economical plan? Because you saw the things that are not addressing. And then you're talking about, you know, if you want to address those things, you're going back to the taxpayers again. I, I like to go to the taxpayers as little as possible. So one of the things that, that I hear a lot is, you know, considering affordability, especially for the, the older retired community here. So renovations are, are going to cost millions. So, you know, and I know from experience, all building projects take time and they usually take longer than you expect. So you can plan to do each of those things in the next nine years. And I'd be happy if we got seven of them done. Because, you know, one year turns into a year and a half and then you're kicking your other project down the road to make sure you finish this one, to make sure that one got done right. So if a retired person who has no taxable income, they're paying property taxes on them, which I know is not the full picture of that, the first, you know, the failed levy. But we're talking about a retired person that doesn't have taxable income. If their home is $100,000, the 6.5 mils would have been $227.50 a year. If we do a 4.5 permanent improvement levy to do those things that I have listed, it would cost 157.50 a year. So you're only talking about a $70 difference. Or if their house is 200,000, you're talking about a $140 difference a year. If their house is 300,000, you're talking about a $210 difference a year for just that list up there versus what was proposed last fall. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're considering, you know, like any cost that you put into these buildings, right now there's, there's not a big sunk cost. Sunk cost is once you spend it, it's gone. Once you do it, that, that one is gone. But we don't have any sunk cost into renovating our buildings at that point, at this point. So, you know, I just wanted to point out that it's, it's not cheap either way, but we need to make a decision. And that's what this committee's for. So I'm of the, the mind, I try to save every dollar that I can. I can see that renovating over 10 years is still going to be very expensive. So I'm, I would say, you know, save the MPA cost and look at a more extensive renovation plan or replacement plan that addresses all of the problems at once. And because it doesn't come at that much of a higher price tag and you would be able to address all of our goals as a committee. We have two levies coming up. That was one of the things I showed you here. We have our permanent improvement levy is expiring. We need that money. We use half our permanent improvement running right now to pay for our crap. So we can't lose that, we need to keep that. And then the emergency levies are both coming off. That need to be renewed by '24 or at the latest November of '25. We have to pass that money. So.
Jay, I'm going to cut you off in about 20 seconds. So I don't, you know, because we've got 15 minutes on this and it's kind of off of the work of the committee as far as I'm concerned.
So I, I think you need to consider that. I mean, that, that's part of considering what we're doing is when would we ask for the money that we've been talking about in this committee? I don't think that there, we had an option to ask for any money until we get over these two levies.
Jay, with the 4.5 mil bonds, would that, how long would that paid out for taxpayers?
So permanent improvement, you know, that would be something that we would have to consider here and the board. How long do we want our permanent, you know, if we're going to increase our permanent improvement, you can do it for three years, you can do it for five years, you can do it for 10 years, you can do it permanent. You could ask for 4.5 mils and then say, okay, what can we get done with that in 10 years? And then do we need more after? Or you can ask for more in five years. So there's not a determinant. I did for 10 years, just thinking that that's been a length of time that we've been discussing.
Okay. Thank you. I, I just want to remind us all that the purpose of this committee that was set up by the school board was to assess the current conditions in Elsmaugn School, McKinnie Middle School, and Yeltsin High School. That that was part of the work that we had agreed, that the school board had recognized was necessary, given that the last levy was defeated by 61% of the vote. And citizens want to, want that information. And the school board was in agreement and set up our committee. I, I think it's, you know, fine to share your thoughts that we shouldn't follow through with the work of the committee, but it's not the committee's place to decide, you know, we're just not going to do the work we've been asked to do. And I think it would be foolish for us not to go forward. The, on Monday, there were three maintenance plan advisors that were interviewed by a part of our committee. We couldn't, to be aware of sunshine law, we only had part of our committee involved in that. These were businesses that help schools maintain and upgrade their school buildings. They had really great experience in their portfolios and I think we were generally impressed with them. We just had a meeting at six o'clock to discuss the, you know, kind of how to go forward with that. And I think we came to an agreement that we would speak to, that we were, we would negotiate, we're going to be negotiating with one of the companies. And can't really go into too much detail because, in terms of how we can, in terms of information regarding that. Now, the maintenance plan advisors are focused at maintenance and upgrades of current buildings. So, you know, needs of the schools that are not going to be met in the current buildings, which I think recognized by the whole committee, there will be the need for some deeper renovations within our current buildings and also new construction to complement what we currently in an upgraded state would have with our current buildings. And that's why Mike Richly, who's our architect, is, that is what he's going to be helping us with. Other people who can, part of the interview process? Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think you explained the interview process exactly as discussed. I just want to correct the record again because I, I worked with Jay a little bit on that PowerPoint. It's not the intention to shut down the work of the community. And I want to make that clear. It's really to discuss what is this role of MPA and what we need as we look towards kind of the scope of the whole project and that's it. And I just, I don't want anybody to walk away from this thinking that, you know, and I'm going to include myself because I certainly saw and, and worked with them on it. It's not the intent to shut down the community. So I just want to make sure. But I think in terms of the MPA interviews, you captured exactly, exactly that.
Is there anybody else want to comment?
Yeah, I do, I do. So going through the interview process with the MPA was very enlightening because I didn't know what an MPA could provide and could not provide. And all of the three companies were extremely qualified, they came with lots of recommendations, they had a strong portfolio, as you said. And all of them at some point gave a variation of the same thing, which is, well, down the line, Yellow Springs will have to build you. So they, all of them underlined that this will be a temporary or short-term or midterm solution to our needs, which really begs to me, the question is, is it going to save us money if we do this for 10 years when all of them seem to imply that we would need to look at a brand-new building? How is that sustainable? And I know that we're referring to, the goal of this committee, and I reiterate, was to make a feasibility study about whether or not it is something that we can, that is meeting our needs. And when I see the three companies or when I hear them, all of them saying like, well, there's only, it determined a lifetime to the renovations and additions that you can make. Oh, this is where I felt that there was a gap in our process here, where we were only looking at renovations and not so much looking at the other needs that you've outlined on your slides that are really essential to it. So this was my, my comment about the process here.
Now, I guess I just want to say that's not what I heard from the MPAs. So, but I think we need to go, I need, you know, follow through with this process. And see what we learn. I don't want us to, you know, go down a road that just continues division in the community, the community about how to go forward. We have to, we have to go forward in taking care of our facilities. We can't just ignore them. And so, you know, hopefully through the continued gathering of information, we can help to somehow ground, that's certainly what I hope. Is there anybody else?
Well, I heard something different also. It's a combination of renovation and adding, we needed something new. Let's look at that. It wasn't limited to just the renovation. I would just like to say, I'd like to see this process play out because we're going to gather some valuable information from whoever we choose. And once we get to that point, then we can make some firm decisions about moving forward.
Okay. Any questions about MPAs? Let me hope so. Okay. Let's go ahead. So part of what we've been doing is members of our community who know something about buildings, we've been looking at the buildings pretty closely, talking to some teachers. It would be nice if we could have talked to more probably, just about the kind of, you know, some of the challenges in their classrooms and the needs that we're going to have to be addressing. And so we've been looking at the different systems of the buildings. I think these are not going to be complete descriptions of the needs of the buildings, but what it's done is we've got people who are, know about buildings, we're going to call them experts, they consider themselves experts, who will be able to interface with the maintenance plan advisors in a very knowledgeable way of, about our buildings, as well as with our architect, yes, we're thinking about how to, you know, meet those, those needs beyond what's going to be able to be met through just maintenance and, you know, improving our buildings. So if you're going to start with Mike, just any updates? Mike was looking at our electrical systems and IT.
Yeah, I, I don't have a lot to add. We did, we lost your mill on. And in general, we looked at some of the electrical addition and panels and bringing more power. The, the long story is short, is that we can add the most helpless connections and places to the builders in this process. Whatever the specific needs are for classroom, we can deal with that as we move down. We go with HVAC, obviously we're going to need power. We're going to have to do something to operate that, bring it into the building. So in general, we can look at all of those issues based on the priorities we set forth. As far as the IT, we did look at the overall system, we, you know, we backed up. We could do some repositionings of some things. There are some spots in both schools that have limited access or light access, whatever you want to call it. We could look at moving some of the access points maybe to the middle order at some point that makes it better where all the students can utilize. So that's pretty much what I understand.
David?
I'll show her what's the last time. But I did manage to do the high school roofs the year, or the week before last. And there was definitely areas that were leaks. I mean, there was all along the wall above the offices, which is the gym, the museum wall. I'm surprised actually there's not more leaks because there's a big lump piece of aluminum flashing, it goes literally the whole length of the building. It's been repaired with some caulk, then someone got a kind of spray, spray tar and seen a TV and tried to spray that on it. And it still falls out. So as long as that's loose, we're never going to get leaks. But that's, that's a very inexpensive, easy fix to get back on. Up at the top of the high school, there was a good few places where there was not really flashing, but it's where the roof member comes up and then, you know, it's attached to the building. There's actually holes and gaps in quite a few places up there, which means again, even though I couldn't find, I can only find two water stains, I think there was on the top floor, but there would seem to be way more places up there that had damaged and, which again, is an easy fix. I mean, it's, it's just roof maintenance that's not happening. Equally, on the top of the high school roof, there was that sort of pagoda thing that was put up, that was supposed to open and close, and then the whole building, which would have been, you know, a big improvement if it had ever worked. But again, one of those things, like we were talking earlier on in the meeting, things that were installed that never worked, that never were made to work. So we sort of paid for stuff and didn't get the value out of it. The roofs on the high school, they're all sort of, or sorry, on the whole of the building, they're, we've got from brand-new to medium and medium to immediate repairs. So they're all sort of in stages over the next 10 years, except for the one that we can still get probably 20 something years out of. Power plant flashing, we have power plant flashing and probably, well, a good bit of the power plant flashing, which is like the aluminum over, over the, the, the top of the outside walls where they are, joints that are loose, flashing that's loose. And, you know, if that's not repaired, you're definitely going to get water coming back down the building at some stage, if not already. All repair, you know, everything's repairable, they're, they're all just maintenance items and should, should be, should be addressed. I did not really look at. I did not really look at any of the heat and air, anything like, like that that was up there. I think Jerry has more to go with that.
So we're just adding on now to reports that have been given a month ago. I just wanted to say in terms of the high school, now David try, is going to try to get up on these roofs and to take, and be able to take a close look at them. We know that there is new roof needed, a new roof needed on our, on our auditorium or on that gym. We need to, it needs to be insulated as well. And.
We're talking about, you know, items that we're badly going to have done. Most of the heating units up there, I mean, it's only a small thing. But the dirt leg on the gas line is wrong on, I think, nearly every single one that's up there. It's like, here we are.
What does that do?
It, it would take any dirt that's in the, in, in the gas piping going into the furnace. So it, it, it's like a, a crude filter. It's just a piece of pipe. But it's something as simple as that and it's still going wrong is just, you know, mind boggling when you're paying huge money to have these pieces of equipment installed. I mean, it's a nothing comment, but it just sort of, again, goes to the thing of, we need someone who actually looks at equipment that's put in to make sure that it's all properly done before we pay the bills.
And Jerry? Jerry's been looking at the plumbing and HVAC. And he reported on the high school last meeting.
Right.
And going to be talking about Mills Lawn.
Well, as far as the Mills Lawn building is concerned, the air condition of the 1952 part of this building is accomplished by window use, window units that are inefficient and they need to be replaced by more efficient, quieter, robust system that meets current air exchange volume standards. And air, AC system serving the remainder of the building needs to be evaluated for reliability and service life and also if it meets the current air exchange volume standards. The heating in the building is accomplished with two gas fire boilers that were likely installed in the late 1990s. And teachers report it's difficult to control the temperature in their classrooms. And it's also reported that it's difficult to maintain adequate level of heating in the west end of the, of the 1952 construction. Determination needs to be made as to whether this is a result of a flow balance or a control or a boiler capacity issue. Currently, there's a service contract in place for the HVAC system inspection on a quarterly basis by a big contractor. Issues that require attention that are found during the routine inspection are authorized for repair on as needed cases. Contract services required outside the quarterly inspection are also handled by the same contractor. As in the high school, indoor air quality is an issue. It's questionable, as I stated before, whether the, the current building code ventilation standards are being met. It's very likely that they are not. This needs to be explored, especially in light of the pandemic. And this issue along with the air filtration systems, materials, replacement schedules, all should be addressed by the NPA and evaluating the HVAC system. Regarding plumbing, the restroom in the lower section of the Mills Lawn building need extensive updating and additional restroom facilities may be recommended. As far as the site goes, the playground equipment intended for use by the lower grades is adequate. Access to the equipment from the northeast doors over here needs to be replaced due to ADA issues and deterioration of the pavement surfaces. Teachers report problems with pet waste and also lack of controlled access while schools in session. Drainage issue over here on the southeast corner of the choir room that needs to be resolved. Teacher and staff parking needs have not been evaluated. And maintenance staff reports that roof storm drainage to the village storm sewer on Leinster Street can be problematic and is likely due to insufficient hydraulic capacity of the village storm sewer. That's it.
Okay.
I did forget to mention that the roof of the music room, M is being attacked by birds. There's multiple holes in the surface, which is very thin. And then there's, so there's foam showing in probably about 12 or 14 holes on the roof.
Oh, interesting. All right. We'll go through all our reports and, you know, if there's any questions or comments. Richard?
I, I was on one of the tours of Mills Lawn and I was out of town and a lot of the rest of this was done. But last week, I, it's over two days, I spent almost a whole day just walking around the perimeter of Mills Lawn, looking very carefully at the extra two walls. And I was struck by several things. The oldest part of the building is in just as good a condition as the newer parts of the building.
In terms of different?
In terms of, of the masonry and any problems with the masonry. Yes, the, the newer windows are, are in better condition in terms of the, the style and manufacture of the windows. But we, in the new part of the building, we have caulking issues, just the same as we have in the old part of the building. That was, that was surprising to me. In the same way, we have a railing about to fall off at the, at the southern entrance to the front of the building. In the same way, in the back of the building, we have a large railing that's about to fall off. The, there's evidence of maintenance work having been done, but what's been done has been incredibly sloppy. Okay? And there's, I don't have any other way of putting it. So what we are doing, I mean, we aren't doing all much. And what we are doing is it very good. We have window air conditioners, as pointed out. Some of those are, are carefully and soundly installed. There are a couple of them that I could walk off with today. Just pick it up out of the window and carry it off. That's how it's installed at the present time. So we've got problems with, with taking care of what we have, what stood out to me. As opposed to fundamental problems with, with the integrity of what originally has been done.
Okay. And then I had put in here, it's really kind of a side note, but it keeps coming up. And the, at the last school board meeting, school board members were asking for information regarding life cycle of modular classrooms. And so I did some research, I'm no, I'm no expert. And I copied out materials that I found online regarding life cycle of modular classrooms. Now, most of you probably know the shoe, that what I'm going to say is affectionately called the shoebox, which is basically a large part of our middle school. Those were modular classrooms. And they were then ripped in and the roof is, has, they've been basically totally encapsulated in our building. So they're not, they're not, well, just leave it at that. The modular unit here, on the other hand, is, you know, is out in the elements as, as noticeable. So just to say regarding the shoebox. So what I found out in terms of life cycle is that when properly maintained according to the articles below, can resolve in a life cycle of 50 years or longer and can be indistinguishable, indistinguishable from stick built buildings. It's noted in the one article that modular classrooms can be incorporated into a building by bricking them in and building a roof over them. And that is what happened to the, the shoebox. In fact, the current roof of the shoebox still has six or seven year warranty on it. I asked Craig Conrad, who was the maintenance supervisor when the shoebox was installed, whether the intentions, because we're hearing a lot about, you know, it's just a temporary fix for our middle school. And I asked what, can, what he remembered the intention of school district was regarding this part, you know, of our facility. And he said, and, and he had no, he did not believe that in fact, there was this idea that it was just going to be temporary. I think the fact that it was bricked in and covered with the standard roof would also indicate this was not the original intention of, of the district. We do know that the shoebox has, has issues. It has moisture issues is one of them. And when we looked at it, we found out that the foundation was not properly fitted and, and it was not installed with the moisture barrier. So that the, the current foundation is actually larger than the, than the structure on top of it. So there's a gap. There's a gap so that water can literally just run underneath it and sort of gather under, under the shoebox. You know, the, the fellows here who do more about buildings than I do felt that placement of a moisture barrier and skirting around the foundation, I think that's the right word, would solve much of that moisture issue. Another thing about the shoebox is that the floors are very noticeably bouncy. And it gives, has maybe given people a sense that it's not built very well. I think that might be part of the reason people have thought that. And I know, and we've talked about, you know, the fact that it probably would not take a lot to stop the bouncing if that is causing people problems. We know HVAC, we know there are other issues in the shoebox. HVAC is an issue in the whole high school. We believe HVAC's an issue there. But I just wanted to kind of correct some of the information that we, of our understanding, you know, regarding modular units. In terms of our modular unit here, you know, one of, not only is it in much poorer condition than the shoebox, but also it's very adjacent to classrooms. So that when there's music going on in there and Brian's, you know, got his, his musicians playing, it can be disruptive to those classrooms nearby. So I just added this and just as a, added information. Now, just.
Has that been part of the tour?
No, I, we, I have not been in it.
I mean, like, twelve inside.
I can tell you that.
Oh, sorry, you mean yours here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The AC side of the HVAC unit, so they're, they're two separate units. On my side of the building, MSDs told Craig that there, there's a leak somewhere that they would have to tear the whole roof up to find. So two, three years ago, we installed one of those windows, freestanding air conditioning units that kind of keeps up the things. The heat still pretty much works, but the awning that was added at some point before I started here nine years ago, doesn't really control the flow of water when it rains. The rain gutter on those things is about an inch wide. And so the threshold under my door is completely rusted away. The bottom of my door is rusted away, the back door, crash bar is rusting off. The door on the other classroom can barely close because it's rusted and it's, the whole building is settled. So you can notice, you see the door frames are not matching the doors. It, it's a tricky thing, notwithstanding that it's separate from the building. Anytime a kid goes in accompanied to the restroom or whatever that, for me personally, is the custodian, adult creates a lot of anxiety for me of whether or not that kid's going where they're supposed to be and they're in the building, whether or not they're going to come back in a reasonable amount of time. I can't look looking for a kid, we're good for a 25-year-old kid.
And, you know, adding this information about the modular units is not to say that we, I mean, I think everybody agrees this has got to be replaced, this, you know, as soon as we possibly do that. Even in terms of the shoebox, I'm not arguing it should remain a classroom. I don't know what, but, but, but I just wanted to kind of correct some of the information out there. And, you know, the suggestion has been, you know, is there some other potential, potential use? Rather than thinking it's something we just, you know, it really is well beyond its lifespan. We should just, you know, get rid of it. I just, we just wanted this additional information to kind of help us be better informed about our, about our facilities. That's why I did that.
And it might help to know that the shoebox is two offices and four classrooms.
Correct.
And four restrooms.
And four restrooms and our tech office. So is not, it's not like, can we just use this for storage? We can. The answer to that is yes. But there is a connected piece, what happens to those classrooms and spaces.
And I think it's recognized, storage may not be that useful if you're on the third floor of the tower and it's, you know, it would, and if, if the shoebox became storage, that may not be that helpful in circumstances for search for students. So I think that's understood. But it's just, like I say, added information so we're a little better informed. Because, you know, there are such a thing as temporary modulators and permanent modulators. Anyway, I learned a little, you know, so there's information there. But, but I was surprised honestly to find out that they're, they can be basically equivalent in terms of life expectancy to Hispanic buildings. I was surprised by that. All right. We wanted to talk a little, okay, questions or comments about the reports?
I have a question.
Yes.
So in the, in the modular report, it said 50-year lifespan and in the single wall from a stick-built building. What's the percentage of school buildings that are built with cinder block versus stick construction, which would I assume would be two by four framing construction like a home would be? That would be a question I would, you know, if we're comparing apples to apples.
Cinder block lasts a lot.
So, I mean, the, the, the 50-year comparison here, if not to a cinder block.
I would say the comparison that Judith was citing was, they use the term stick-built buildings. But I think what they really had to say was conventional construction.
That's why I was clarifying.
So it could include these buildings? It can include these buildings that are blocked and fricked.
Yes.
Other?
Yeah, no, my understanding of a stick-built building is, yeah, the framing is done with two by fours, which not a lot of schools are built with, with two by fours, but certainly a lot of buildings are. And I think it's important to note that in the life cycle of permanent modular buildings, it depends greatly on where they install properly, how have they been maintained? That, which, which is the essence of a lot of buildings, you know? Do you keep a roof properly? So it's, it greatly varies. 50 years is certainly not unreasonable. I also saw 35 as well, as, like, expectancy. Or, you know, it could be longer than 50 years, but it depends on insulation.
Yep. Other comments or questions about these reports?
I did, I did have a question for all three of you. So you haven't been able to get into the trailer to do your inspection of Mills Lawn? Was there any other part of Mills Lawn that you were not able to, to visit and to assess?
What more do we want to see?
Yeah.
I still need to get on the roofs.
You still need to go on the roof here?
Yeah, I couldn't get Craig. He was busy. Each time I called when I was free, he was not available.
What about you, Michael? Did you ever begin to?
And that, that, and the trailer? Yeah, and Richard?
I, because I, this is the first visit to Mills Lawn. There's some more in the interior that I would like to see. I haven't been inside the trailer, so while I did do the exterior of those when I did the exterior of the rest of the building. But I have been.
I have been in the trailer, but I consider that a throwaway.
I agree.
Anything else?
I have one request.
Yeah.
While you're doing these walkthroughs, and I know someone mentioned that there were loose railings at Mills Lawn, you know, that puts our students at risk. So if that is something that you see and it needs to be fixed, I feel that I need to be made aware or Terry needs to be made aware because that puts our students at risk. And that should be something that is told to someone who can immediately address it right then.
I'd be happy to, with either of you, anytime with the information that I got.
Thank you. And anyone, I mean, if it's, if it's going to put the safety of our staff or the safety of our students at risk, we need to know now. We can't wait until a meeting on the Tuesday night at 7:00.
Okay, cool. Sounds great. So the experts, the building experts, we had a conversation a week or two ago, just starting to think about prioritized needs. And so I just wanted to make people aware we are, we have started thinking about that from the point of view kind of of the maintenance of the building. So not, not, so I haven't shared that with you guys because it's not ready yet. But the, I'm just going to say the different categories that we started with. And then if the guys want to join in. And then if the guys want to join in, obviously the building users are going to, you know, strengthen our ability to think about, about the prioritized list. But, so, so the first thing we came, we talked about was security improvements. We had just, you know, two or three ideas that we felt were not security experts, by the way, for schools. But I know people are thinking about secure entries, including the vestibule, providing window covers in classrooms. And there are a lot of classrooms with window covers that are not working, they're not functioning well. And then that teachers have means of securing their rooms, where those were the things we were talking about. In terms of the other priorities we saw was roofs. When roofs start to leak, you start to have, not only, I mean, does that affect schooling, but it also starts to cause increased damage. And then HVAC is clearly a very high need in both buildings. And it also greatly impacts education. People are too hot or too cold. It's hard to concentrate on learning. We don't want that to be going on for students or staff. And then starting to think about more immediate things that could be done to improve IT that would not require a lot of investment. Thinking just, you know, and also thinking about, you know, a beginning, I know we're going to be waiting for the MBAs to tell us more about what we need, but investigating and then electrical and plumbing, I mean, those are, those are the things that we're thinking about. One thing we did talk about, Dorothy and I had talked about this idea of volunteers to help teachers repair their rooms in the fall. By like summer, we had started talking about that. And I know these members of the committee had wondered if there were some things they could look at to just improve things in the fall, you know, things that we could possibly do as volunteers, just to see, you know, for example, air handlers that are full of dirt or are dusty, you know, thinking about ways that we could be helpful to the district to assist teachers who are, you know, having some, you know, problems, their quality, for example, that we can start to help a little bit with that. So that was something I wanted to throw out there. Would you guys want to talk about, about these, these ideas of prioritized list?
I'm sorry, can you repeat it? Because I don't think it was included in the.
No, it's not in because we're not, it, it wasn't included. So, you feel like we should, but I thought we would just let you know what we, how we were starting.
Yeah, but I didn't catch it. I'm trying to type the minutes.
Okay.
So can you give me like the volunteer ones on that again?
Okay, sure.
What did you say in order?
Security improvements, roofs, and HVAC. And then we started thinking about smaller things regarding IT and the electric system. So can you? That's as far as we've kind of gone.
And who is we?
Well, it's basically the building experts, myself.
Okay.
We just started, you know.
Organizing in order.
Organizing, our thinking about it, you know, the users were going to try to prioritize needs. I know, you know, that never, hasn't gotten done yet. I don't know if there's, if you guys are planning.
Well, I think, I guess I'm feeling, and maybe I missed a meeting, I'm feeling a little like I missed something.
Me too.
Because I know the users took a survey, but I would appreciate us being the committee and not so much the experts and the users because I, I, I'm not, it's not feeling right to me. So, did I miss a meeting?
You didn't miss a meeting. We had been talking about the next step would be prioritization. And I thought users, and then Dorothy said, you know, it was hard because there were so many needs to try to prioritize the needs, and that was part of what we were going to try to do as a committee. And it wasn't that we're trying to do one thing and you're trying to do, users are trying to do another thing. It was, I, I thought we would start sharing as we're thinking about prioritization. And the, so that's kind of how we got to this point.
We, we will prioritize the.
The user.
The user information. I'm just going to tell you now though, it's going to be hard because if you ask a teacher, and there is a teacher here and two principals, it's, it's all, how, how do I pick, right? But we can take a stab at it, but there is a lot where we can, we can try.
When, when we were informally talking about priorities, we, we were keeping in mind what had come from the surveys from the teachers. And we were, we were doing this balancing act between things that need to happen sooner because if we don't do them, they're going to become much more expensive versus things that need to happen for our own comfort today, which are very important in order to keep our educational program. So it, it takes both of, just as you said, you just even look at one side of that problem, it's hard to pick and choose. So as Judith said, we came up with some generalities. You know, we don't want the roof of the gym fail and destroy the whole gymnasium. That just doesn't make any sense at all. On the other hand, we also, you know, have to make sure that we're, we're doing a group job of providing security for our teachers and students.
And we did discuss that, you know, as well as having those big items, that there should be money, that we should be looking and saying, okay, you know, we're presented with everything should go towards, I think I used earlier, it's that happiness word, but, you know.
Who is, who is we?
You know what? In between meetings, we're meeting because we're looking at buildings and we're trying to work on our workforce as to provide for the buildings. That's what we're talking about.
I remember just saying, we, we do have to do things to make the classrooms, you know, more inviting and whatever, but basically, and, and, and we would be using the, the survey that the teachers did, you know, that, that would fall into that. But at the moment, we were really concentrating on trying to get just, that other stuff is we have to start somewhere.
Okay. And probably the reason we just need together is because we can't meet all together as a whole committee because we have, we're bound by Sunday afternoon. So we just have to be working together. Just as, just as a user.
And I guess I, I keep hearing a phrase a lot, relatively inexpensive. And I guess, I, I want to know what that means. What is relatively inexpensive? Does, does everybody have an idea of what that means? Because we're using it a lot.
I think it's a fair question. On the other hand, we also all have ideas of what's expensive.
Yeah, so, so I, that's what I'm saying. It keeps being thrown out there, this is relatively inexpensive, this is relative, I, I want to know what does everybody consider.
On one example, this is brought up tonight, the difference between replacing a roof because it's leaking and fixing the flashing because it's leaking, one is relatively inexpensive and one is relatively expensive.
Yeah.
All right. But they both solve the problem.
Charge her.
If, if we've made the correct analysis of what's causing the leaking.
Yeah. No, and so relatively inexpensive was used for fixing the flashing and stuff. I guess I kind of concur with that, but I've heard relatively inexpensive for fixing the bouncing floor and addressing the water issues in the shoebox. And I'm not sure about that.
We're talking about a few thousand dollars.
And we're talking about the difference between replacing it and solving.
That's only a few thousand dollars. And I mean, you're talking about, I heard going underneath there and pouring concrete.
No, no, no. Putting down a plastic vapor barrier. We're not talking about pouring concrete underneath.
Well, that was the solution to addressing bouncing floors.
No, that, no, that, I mean, David had mentioned.
That you would just basically put in an extra beam underneath it, which is a very simple.
Yeah. And, and, I mean, I, I don't know about the, where the flashing would be needed and the vapor barrier, except I'm, I'm trying to get an idea.
So what we're talking about is a few thousand dollars of what was mentioned about the, about the modular construction.
I mean, you would be talking of a fraction of a percentage of the cost of replacing that whole building?
I, I understand that it's a fraction of a percentage of replacing it. I guess I, I still want a, a dollar amount. Is a few thousand dollars, two thousand, is a few thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand?
That's why we're hiring, working on maintenance improvements to get specific numbers to do all of this.
I was going to say, if there's, on some of these, I mean, when we've been talking about these, we've been looking at the buildings, you know, some ideas have come up out, out around some of the problems that are really causing problems for users that seem like it might be able to be fixed fairly inexpensive, a few thousand dollars. And if, since these guys know a fair amount about buildings, I mean, do you want to hear those ideas? Because it might be that some of those things could make a big improvement in. I mean, maybe it's too early, but is it too early?
I would like to hear the whole.
Okay.
I, I would like to read for the whole school.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. It's just, you know, sometimes it seems like it could help in the near term. Okay. All right. So Mike, are we ready to move on? Okay. Mike Richly. So, you know, there's been some discomfort just looking at maintenance and upgrades of current buildings and with good reason because it's not going to meet some of the identified needs that are going to require deeper renovations and new construction. And so Mike took it upon himself to put together a beginning list of identified deep renovation enhancement needs of our district. And he just started the list, you know, and though he doesn't think it's the end-all and be-all, but it was, it's a way to get started so that there will be this, there can be this parallel process going on as we're trying to consider the, this, this option of maintenance and building as we build some new build as well, that both of us maybe going forward together would make it, would be better, a better idea. So that's what he's started us to keep out. And his list should be here. Can I put it here? Yes, it's the last page. That was a good introduction, Mike.
Do you want me to go through it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. So yes, this is just a draft, wanting to open the conversation with the committee about what needs to be addressed for the students or the teachers to support, we'll educate, here's another voted, we're going to, educational adequacy issues in the building beyond just pipes and power and leakers. So this is just kind of my way of trying to instigate the conversation and open up a conversation with the committee about how do we go about figuring out what the whats are? What additional enhancement projects do we want to consider? And then how might the committee move forward considering them? So my list is going a little longer, so it started at Mills Lawn, creating a secure entry vestibule. Anyone, please stop me if there's any questions on what these are. Replacement of the, of the educational spaces housed in, in the modular. And I don't think anyone would agree, disagree that that modular should be carted offsite and, and off it goes. Creating collaboration spaces, learning communities to support the education in the buildings. So spaces for breakout presentation, project-based learning-type presentations for the students, small group activity, and having those in a place where they're supportive of what's happening in the classrooms. You don't have to necessarily go all the way down one hall and all the way down another, but the spaces are really embedded in their learning communities. Now, small group rooms for testing, for individual work are important to support the educational environments. We've talked about restrooms, whether they're adding fixtures or renovating bathrooms. Storm shelter is currently on moratorium, so if the moratorium is lifted, that might be something we have to consider planning in, in the projects. If the moratorium's extended, I think the committee could have a conversation about if we want to consider storm shelters in the building.
Can you, you have already on moratorium?
Yeah, so there was, there was a building code requirement for educational uses exceeding greater than 50 students to provide a storm shelter in their buildings. And that is, there's a regulation called ICC 500, and that's a regulation that requires that the, all of the occupants in the building, teachers and students, have to be housed in a space that can withstand 250 mile an hour winds, which is an EF5. I think maybe some of you saw pictures of what happened to the fire distribution facility. That was, I think, an EF2. So imagine orders of magnitude. The second one is what they call the windborne missile resistance. So you have to take a 15-pound two-by-four and the assemblies have to be able to stay in 100 mile, that two-by-four crashing at any surface roof or walls at 100 miles an hour. So it's a significant structure. Districts that are under the moratorium are often choosing not to do it due to the cost, but that's, it's a worthwhile discussion. There's also in-between solutions where a basic building code is designed for a 90 mile an hour wind and a EF5 is a 250 mile an hour wind. So some districts are saying, well, let's just go ahead and harden. Maybe we design for 120 mile an hour winds or something in between. So there's all kinds of conversations that can be had about, about that.
But it, it wasn't my original meaning, but it's not a requirement.
It's not a requirement that expires this fall. So that'll be up to the legislature to see if they set that around.
Is there a square footage requirement based on student population?
There is, and I, I would have to look up the number because I forget, but there's a standing square foot requirement that's not much, and they're most efficiently housed in spaces that don't have furniture. Because if they're housed in spaces with furniture, you have to discount furniture because you can't believe what furniture are, so. That, that's more of a, like, the fire code. You're, you're talking about the storm shelter space, correct? Yeah, there is a square footage requirement in the storm shelter requirement too. Yeah, yeah. But it's, my guess is probably based on the, the fire, kind of how many, because I know fire chiefs often come in and will say, okay, for standing room only, you can have this many people. When you add chairs, it goes down to this number, etc. All right.
Can I ask a question about Mills Lawn? So when I recreate secure entry vestibule, and I might know the answer based upon something you said earlier, but through renovation or new construction, so it's going to involve a new addition somewhere. So it's either moving a classroom somewhere for a new addition or a new addition expanding out. There are only so many ways we can go here for a secure vestibule. Mike, thinking there, right?
Hundred percent right. Hundred percent.
I do, if, if that's now a good time to talk about consulting, what you want to go through both of the examples. Okay. I've seen that you've added the community collaboration spaces and the small group rooms. Do you think that, do you think that there should be a different line for the private space for consulting, I'm forgetting the word right now.
Related services?
Yes. Yeah.
I guess special education services is another thing to add to the list if we need to provide additional spaces to serve those students.
Yeah, because right now they get tutoring in the hallway, which is not being private where there's nobody, it's proper space for, for.
So maybe it's, if, if those functions can happen in small group rooms or if we need to add additional spaces for.
To me, it felt like it was different from a small group room because I think what you've mentioned is that they would still be seeable from a classroom, you know, so that there could be a communication between the small group rooms and what's happening in classroom, whereas I know that we need private spaces for that. So it feels like a different category of that.
That's a good add.
And, and then I wanted to talk also about Mills Lawn, how there's probably a need to decouple the gym, which also serves as a theater, which also serves as a serving area expansion. So I know that you, you talked about the serving area extension, but I'm not sure that it, it included the problem of the overlap of gym and theater here and how the lack of a proper performance basis in running cooperation.
Yeah, so that would, if you would want to look at adding a space, that would be added to this list.
It would be an addition. It would be an addition, right.
It's not uncommon, though, for a school to have a multi-use room for student dining, gym, and, and there is a stage there, so.
Yeah, and so I think what's, what we're seeing here is that we can't use our stage as much as we would need to, and we need to rent out all the performance spaces because we have the gym going on there and then the lunch.
Yeah.
So at that point, you know, why do we have a performance space if we can't use it? And the other item that came to my mind here is that I know that we have a missed opportunity in this village to provide a public preschool program, and we know that we have the need for it because we don't have the facilities. And right now, the, the public preschool program in town is providing very limited access to services because they don't have the facilities. And so there is a missed opportunity here to provide a service that is needed.
Some other others, furniture. New furniture goes a long way to making the space feel more collaborative and flexible and biggerating. There's a lot of cool new wobble chairs and things that help the little kids stay engaged, particularly those who struggle with paying attention. There's furniture designed for that. Things like finishes, carpeting, painting walls, flooring, case, classroom casework for storage, sinks, teacher wardrobe cabinets. And then I think a real important one would be classroom technology. What's the vision for delivering classroom technology? What does that look like? How might that be deployed?
Are windows under your hat?
No, I, I thought they were boring enough to keep on the MPA's list. So I, I kind of kept building structures and things like that off of this for, for now. And then at the middle school, high school, it's really the same, same list. I added a couple of things here. The nuance of the shoebox, maybe if it's for non-educational use, is every purpose and for what use? The three-story tower is a non-load-bearing steel structure, a wall so that it could be moved, so the, the existing configuration of spaces of that tower could be rearranged. There's the issue of the band room at the high school. I think some have advocated to replace it, so there's that question. And then I think AC in the gymnasium actually should be on this list because I think that's an educational adequacy issue with multi-use of that room. I think that room could also see improvements for performing arts, too. Lighting, acoustics, just some things that you could do on that stage that could really bring that for a multi-use environment. And then, well, the stairwell safety improvements need to be addressed. Surely that should be on the MPA's list, but that's a kind of health and safety and welfare of the students issue. So anyway, that's, that's an initial list to spark the conversation, how the committee goes about tackling, prioritizing, working through, you know, defining what this list is, would be a good conversation.
I was going to ask that you, any of those extra ideas that you're adding to your list that you would send out?
I'll do that. I'll send it to you.
Okay, yep, I'll get it off.
And so what would be the process for you to do with that list? Is that we try to organize them?
Well, so I'm not sure what the next step is. Maybe you and I should talk, maybe think about it for the next meeting. Because, yeah, I'm not quite sure.
Maybe there's another, like, a balancing committee to the building experts, maybe it's the user experts or for some other type of work that can be done to make sure we're, I mean, we've surveyed, except, but.
Actually, if I, if I can run this for the user, should we take a stab at this list in saying what else might come up outside of this meeting and how to organize this since we would be doing about the same thing about the other document? Okay, sure.
I was going to ask if anybody had any other ideas to add to his list.
I mean, two things come to mind. One, one really related to this is just the idea of if, if we are going to renovate this space, we're thinking about getting rid of the modular building and taking some classrooms to make other spaces, like, is this a time where we think about, does sixth grade move up to the 420 East Union Road complex so that frees up space so we don't have to do an addition here and an addition there? So, so I mean, that's like an idea that I would have. And then the second thing that I've been thinking about really all meeting is, you know, there's a, there's been a dramatic shift in education in the last two years and, and there's been a mass exodus of educators leaving the profession. And I think, you know, as we are going through the hiring cycle, the, the competition that we are seeing in, in attracting and retaining high-quality educators that are going to impact our kids that we have now, our kids that we have in 10 years, our kids that we have in 20 years, is significantly different than it was, I think, even four years ago. So, so thinking about, as we are trying to, to keep the quality educators we have here, here, and bring in new educators as our teachers retire, facilities play a significant role in, in attracting and keeping those people here. And, and as an educator, if I can go teach in a brand-new facility that's comfortable with the best technology, I've got storage space, I've got all these things, everything functions the way it's supposed to, and I can get exactly the same, why would I go teach in a facility that even if it's functional, isn't, you know, as comfortable or doesn't lend the same opportunities? I, I just think that's something that is kind of a bigger picture of consideration that maybe even when we were looking at the, the bond issue, this past bond issue and into the bond issue before that, it for sure wasn't really a consideration. I think it's something we have to think about now.
If you don't mind, that, that conversation about sixth grade moving up to the high school is critical. I'd always be, if that's seriously on the table, that should be the very first thing we talk about. It's more economical to build one addition at the middle school, high school that's larger than to build two additions, one middle school, high school, and one in Mills Lawn. It's a, it'd be a huge impact on the plan.
Okay, so let me, let's pause, let's pause. We are just talking about, let's say, I think, just, it hasn't, I haven't even talked about it to the board. Educationally, it makes a lot of sense, so there are lots of reasons behind our thinking. We certainly can accelerate those conversations, but I don't want anybody watching this to think that sixth grade is moving because it's not.
Word, yeah.
Sixth grade is right here next year. And anywhere, anyway, there's nowhere for them to move, so that's-
Right, there's nowhere for them to move. No, there's no space. Good idea, I think that's a really good idea.
Yes, and there will be extensive conversation with parents in the community about this because it, it can get emotional, but there are really solid academic reasons for it, but we're not there yet. But your point is well taken.
Yeah, if you don't have to replace the modular, you can find small group rooms and collaboration spaces within existing spaces, so.
Can I, can I, there are two sixth graders' classes here right now, this past year?
For, for this current year, we have, the current year coming up, we have two.
But sometimes there are three because we know that every so often we have-
Correct. Next year I expect to have three.
Okay.
But you have three fifth grades? Correct.
Also take load off the kitchen. I mean, it's a cascading, but.
Any other comments? I, I mean, I think, thinking about this is actually helpful in kind of balancing out the kind of discourse we're having around, you know, around our facilities, so I appreciate that you thought to bring it into the meeting tonight. That's helpful. All right.
So I guess there was just one thing that I wanted to clarify since it's recorded is that this list would be independent from the work done by your MPA. This would be in addition to, yeah. I just wanted to clarify that it's more, everybody-
Although it could be integrated into the current-
It will be. For example, when down the road in the MPA sizing, we're asking them to make recommendations on electrical systems upgrades.
Yeah.
If we're putting addition on that's this big, you know, they need to know.
Yeah.
Because it's part of the calculus and the cost and the sizing of equipment.
So there would need to be communication and planning and designing, but it would not be, this is not something that we're talking, that it would be under the agreement of an MPA, this would be an addition or a step, a little bit.
Bringing it together with their process.
Will the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing estimate for new spaces be the MPA's responsibility or your responsibility?
Probably work together.
But that was something we need to make the MPA aware of, that that may be included in this school board.
Yes, and one of the groups, some of the groups that were interviewed mentioned that, that they would work with the architect to figure out what the master plan is to make sure the things that they're implementing would support that master plan and you wouldn't be having to redo or undo work.
Well, the next item is, I had just been discussing a visit to Oakwood Schools to observe permanent improvements and discuss with their facility manager. However, it sounds like other members of the committee have suggested we need to broaden it, maybe Oakwood's not the place to go, I don't know. So we're going to work on both looking at a school district that maintains and has a permanent improvement plan of many older facilities, what we are considering, as well as go to a new school and see what that looks like so that we can be very well informed about, you know, what these choices mean. And I'm going to suggest that we, Dorothy and I talk with Mike so we can think about this. We want to, I do think we want to see some, you know, older schools that are being rehabbed and updated. We want to see some of the ways that these 21st century educational needs are being integrated into those older buildings, if that's something we want, if that's, since that's something we are trying to do. So we can see it with our own eyes and have a better sense of, of what, what it would actually look like. Yeah.
But in terms of, of vision that you have for this, since we have a sunshine house, would it be everyone? Would it be, how do we do this?
Well, we could just break into two groups. It's, it's the discussions that are happening outside the meeting. I mean, we'll have to think about it.
We're not-
Because it won't be a vote, right? We want it to be-
I think it's probably, yeah, a vote out of a way, not to lie, of a sunshine house, But I think, yeah, let's try to figure out that, and we can share that with the committee, and we're going to have to contact those folks and so on. And does that sound like a good idea? Is there any other thoughts about it?
I, I would like to have, Terry, that's okay, I would like to have your opinion about facilities that you think that we should look at because I, because of the connection with all the print, so I know.
Yep.
One challenge in touring any schools right now is they're not in session.
Yeah.
And it makes a big difference because a lot of times you go through schools in the summer and they're waxing the floors and all the furniture's in the hallway, and you just comparing that to when they're back in session and seeing them using spaces.
Maybe, should we wait until September? If Mike, be okay?
I think it would, it would benefit what we would see, we would see it in action.
Okay. That's a good point. I think September's not too late. Okay.
Yeah, and you can certainly start figuring out where, lining that up because-
Right, it's going to-
Bringing 13 people through a, a building in the middle of a school day, you know, we're not-
We could say, Jack, but, you know, if you had 13 people, you had to show the school through while everybody, classes were in session, that might be kind of a big disruption.
Right.
So there may be some advantages, disadvantages in doing it when school's not in session.
I could see even doing it at the end of a school day. I mean, like, when the school year is in session, but classes aren't in session would be-
When the buildings are set up, right? Set up and, and live through a day, maybe seeing them at the, the end of the day would actually be telling to us.
Right. But, yeah. Okay, good ideas. Okay, energy efficiency possibilities. Do you want to get into the store there?
I, if that's okay with you, I'm going to table this for next time because I'm missing just a few key information and, and I haven't had time to really talk it out with Jay and Terry, and I want to make sure that I'm not missing anything in my, in my progress, so I'm going to tell it all in until our next one.
Okay. If people have thoughts about the next meeting, exactly what should be on the agenda, we could throw them out now, but I would suggest also that, I mean, Dorothy and I and Terry and Mike, that we kind of talk together to think, I mean, we'll come up with a-
I think we should, can we discuss a date for it, knowing that I'm not going to be there on the next one?
That's a good point.
I'm not going to be there until-
Always good to pick the date.
But just to pick everybody's schedule right now.
Right, yeah, very good point. So ordinarily, we're supposed to do, I don't, is the school board meeting in July?
There is one in July.
There's one in July, yes.
Is it, and is August-
July 14th.
No, there's one in-
Oh, I, I, we have a month.
There's one?
Yeah, I know there's always one at every month, but I thought we were taking one off in the summer.
We did not have a June work session.
Oh, that's what it was. Okay, sorry about that.
Or it's only-
It's July, it's no July work session.
I thought we dropped some meeting, I could hear everyone else. Okay, that's-
Do we have a June work session?
And I don't know, but, because I wouldn't be here for the June work session anyways, so we may be dropping both work sessions and this, so.
Okay, so we had said it would be the first Thursday, the 7th, and if we are having our school board meeting on the regular second Thursday of the 14th, we should try to do the 7th. Dorothy will be in France.
Yeah, I'm visiting France.
Yeah, happily could see her family after a long time, which is great, so how is the rest of your schedules?
I, I'm just-
You won't be here. What about everybody else? Everybody?
I mean, just to, the thumbs up if they're there.
Yeah.
Which, which week?
July 7th.
July 7th. You won't be here.
I'm on a, I'm on a first train to go. We're missing three-
Jerry's day.
Okay.
So can I, July?
I can, I can do in the summer.
Four, I don't know, five people.
You won't be here.
Very, is that?
Terry's that day.
That's, that's five, that's five absences.
You're out for two weeks. You're out for two weeks.
I'm out for a, for a month.
I know you are, and Jack is out for two weeks.
Okay, so a question, would the second, the Monday, the 11th, would that work better for people? I got a, a yes that wasn't a no.
Okay.
I got a no that still, no, no. You don't know.
I have not scheduled, I may be jetted, I'm not in charge.
I mean, I don't have my calendar here all these days.
I think, I think we should take-
Should we just do-
As many as we can and, and go with it because-
Trying to get everybody will not work.
So do we run on the 7th or the 11th, so we can add, you, you was going to add, but you have-
Maybe we get, we get one more person.
Okay, you want to do the 11th then? I'll have you do the 11th. Let's just-
Monday, July 11th.
Yep.
Here at 7:00 P.M.
Yep, here at 7:00 P.M. Yeah, thanks for that reminder. When you go to a meeting, you always want to set your next meeting before you break up. Try to pull it together. Okay, anything else that people want to say before we get to do? Yeah?
From the community, or, as many people are really excited about the information that's going to be coming forward, of what can be rehabbed, what needs to be new, things. Well, it's obviously a lot of time for a lot of people.
Thanks, Terry.
If that brings to mind a question-
Yeah.
What is your name?
My, I'm Paul, Sage.
Oh, you're sorry. Hi, dear.
Sorry. And everybody may know this but me, because I have been involved in everything I'm saying, but what deliverable is this committee going to produce for the board?
Have you seen the charge of, of the committee?
Yes, what was the, the first slide in Jacob's slideshow, right?
That's our mission, Sage, that's the district.
The district's mission, okay.
We're going to deliver a report to the school board regarding what a, a permanent improvement plan, basically, we're kind of creating one so we can see what that looks like, and, and then the board will make a decision on the go-forward in terms of what this is. So it'll be, yeah.
So, so in some form of report, it's comprehensive, right?
And that's also where the facilities and planning advisor, so they really-
Yes, the management plan advisor will play an important role there definitely, as I'm aligned. am I. Any other comments or questions? Okay, thanks, everybody, I thought it was very good, thank you.